Yeah.
Only the public would show up in these numbers, huh?
Ann is here. Ann Krantz is in the back. Marty Cook.
Who?
Marty Cook.
Oh, yeah, I had his son.
It says Pingree football.
There is it.
Yeah, it's Ben. Yeah, it's Ben. Right there where it says, oh, Marty.
All right.
Where it says Pingree football right there in the front.
I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:07. So first, I'd like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. First thing we have is any citizens' comments. Citizens' comments?
That would be you.
Yeah. Certainly don't get this much attention at home. Now I have it. Thank you all for having me. Hello, everyone. My name is Marty Cook. Puritan Road in Wenham. I don't plan on taking a lot of time, but I do want to address a few things that have taken place over the course of the last couple of years and have sort of come to a head this year. Just to give my background for those that don't know me, I've been part of the youth sports program in town here for, coming up on 10 years now. I've been the commissioner of youth, the youth football program, Hamilton Wenham Youth Football Program for the last three years. I love youth sports. My wife says I'm obsessed with it. I'm going to be sad when it's gone. And I've only got a couple of years left, so I want to make sure that what we do now and when we pass it moving forward to the next group of parents that are coming up, that we leave it in good shape and that we continue with the reputation that Hamilton Wenham Sports have with both our football programs as well as our Little League programs. And that part of the problem that we're having is field usage, which I know you're all well aware of the problems we're having. What came to a head this year was we've been kicked out of, for lack of a better phrase, use of the high school field for our home games for our youth football players. We by far and away are the smallest program. Hamilton Wenham Youth Football is a Cape Town youth football program. We have 16 cities and towns in the program. We're by far and away the smallest program around. We don't have a lot of resources. We don't have a lot of funds coming in. We're not like Little League where we can hold massive fundraisers to raise a lot of money. So we're really dependent on what we have for resources and we're really dependent on the school fields and the DPW to keep these things up. We do what we can. We raise a few grand in our fundraising, but we don't have a lot. And that's the honest truth. We've had some people that have been very generous to us in the past and we're grateful for that as well. And that's kept us afloat. What happened this year was at the last minute, which most things usually are, as you know, our schedule came out. And we had four home games scheduled. And unfortunately, we received an email saying that a meeting took place and we were unable to use or have access to the high school game field. We didn't put up much of a fight. We didn't say anything back in return. We just sort of accepted it. Looking back, maybe we should have had more of a conversation about it because we're fortunate enough to have access to Pingree. And we've been playing our home games over on the Pingree turf field. Pingree built their turf field last year and it's a beautiful area and we have access to it. I'm also an assistant football coach over at their high school. If I didn't have access to that facility and we weren't allowed access to the high school field, I'm not sure what we do. We have all of our games on the road. It's not fair to our parents. It's not fair to our players. And to be honest, we're the feeder system for the high school here. All the kids that grow up playing youth football in town here, they look to the high school players. They look to the high school itself and they see that field, even though it's, they're at the middle school now, and they see that field out back there and they want to play there. And they see these older, bigger kids and they look up to them. And they don't get to play there. And I'm trying to keep that connection between the high school and the youth. And by getting no access to that field, it really, really makes it difficult to keep that connection. And I've spoken to our high school head coach, Jim Pugh, who's done a great job. And trying to keep that connection of having some of the players come and speak to my guys and have Jim come to our games and, you know, I encourage my youth guys to go to those games. That's the connection we have. But I've had the kids ask me, Coach, why don't we play at the high school? I don't have an answer, which leads me to I guess why I'm here today. I know most of you should have received an email that my wife and I sent out. My wife is on the board as well. My wife Sue is on the board with us. We have a very small board. There's only six of us that run the program. And I know you all received the email. I've spoken to one or two, but I only received one response back and that's a little disconcerting to me. I want to ask you if you've received the email. And if you did, have you read the email? If I could get a show of hands, please. And read it. Thank you. I guess my, what I want to do now is have a little give and take. And maybe that's not procedure, but I'd like to do it anyway. If you've read the email, I'm curious what your response is.
So this isn't necessarily the forum for that. And, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. I actually reached out to you at practice the other day because I actually coached the youth program with Marty. And I know that it's a, it is a topic, a large topic of concern with this board. So the response, I can't sort of, you know, be responsible for an individual responses, but I do know that it is something that I've already had a preliminary discussion with Dr. Kuchenberger, just acknowledging that it exists and, you know, looking forward. So just in an interest of time, I know when you and I spoke the other day that you had mentioned, you know, just sort of getting to the ask of what you're actually looking for.
So I guess what? Well, I want to back up to the beginning of that. So I've been to some of these meetings before. What happens is we come to the podium and we speak and I see some notes taken and some heads nodding and then it's a thank you and we leave and this just dies. If anyone's been a victim of that like I have in the past, you know exactly that's what happens. And I'm not saying that you're not trying, but the wheels of bureaucracy is what happens. It just dies. I've been a part of it for too long to know that that's not the case. So I guess I am looking for moving forward answers. I'd like to know what we're going to do to fix the problem. Now, I don't want to turn this into a turf conversation because that's a complete other animal. But that does loom, right? I mean, that's, that's part of the issue, you know, the maintenance of the fields. That's a conversation for another day, hopefully a very, a day very soon. But I guess part of the problem too is how do we tell these families that are all taxpaying families that they don't have access to their own field? Who, who, who has the right to make that decision?
So that decision is made based on a variety of factors. The athletic director is empowered to be able to make that recommendation. And ultimately, as the expert in athletics, I trust him when he says the field's safe to play or not to play. This is a massive challenge for all, for both Hamilton Wenham and, both communities, Hamilton and Wenham and the schools. And I do think that we are working really strategically. The subcommittee, the capital and financial planning subcommittee is working really strategically to try to develop a private-public partnership so that we can move forward and find a, a better, more sustainable solution for our kids. Because the other factor, it's not just about inconvenience or about what's fair or right. It's a safety issue. Not only our fields, but our track has become very unsafe for our kids. And that's something that we have to take into consideration as we assess our capital needs in both communities and across the district. How are we going to address that? And I think that partnering, create, coming up with some creative funding sources is our best way forward because we have a lot of capital demands. And we have to be really considerate of what our taxpayers can handle. So we're working diligently on that. I know it's kind of cold comfort because it doesn't give you a direct answer to the problem that's before you today. But I'm confident that in our collaboration and with the leadership of the capital financial subcommittee, that we will be able to start moving the ball forward and actually bring some resolution to both communities and the school district that will allow our kids to have more access and more equity across all of the programs.
I can appreciate financial burdens, no question. What this has done is caused my tiny little program financial burden. Because now we have to pay, you know, some fees to be over at Pingree. You know, we have to pay several parking attendants. We have to pay janitorial fees. You know, I don't have access to certain things that I would have access to at the, at the school here. I have to fill my car up every day with concessions and, and scales and equipment every single game back and forth. Whereas here, it's here and has been for decades. It was a bit of a shock when we couldn't play at this field this year.
So just in closing, just for the sake of time, because we actually, citizens' comments, we usually only have three minutes for, and there's usually not back and forth, but I, obviously I take this very personally. So, but how many remaining home games do we have this year?
I believe we have, well, we have playoffs as well, so we should have at least four.
At least four? And doing, we don't know offhand. Do you mind sending out the dates of those playoff games and see if there would be something that we can even look at?
The scheduled ones are on our website, each W.
Sure, I have them right here, too.
The schedule's on there. And then the final two or three games, depending on playoffs, are scheduled late. So those probably will be, because I know your team's doing well, Dave, as well as mine. So probably make the playoffs, so we'll have at least one or two home games there.
Well, I mean, I want to thank you for your time for coming out tonight. Like I said, you know, you know I've got your back on this. I definitely want to reach out and maybe we actually put this as a full-adjourned item on a future meeting if we can't come up with a, a good short-term solution.
I'd like to.
All right?
Thank you for your time.
So thank you. So any other citizen comments? All right, so I'm just going to make a brief change to the agenda and actually going to move up the welcoming of the new Wenham Town Administrator, Anthony Insaldi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. I'm Anthony Insaldi, the Town Administrator for Wenham. Just want to say it's, it's been so far two months. My history is I came from the town of Littleton as the assistant. And prior to that, I worked for the town of Brookline. Had a great welcoming reception here in town. I really truly appreciate Superintendent Kuchenberger reaching out to myself as well as Joe in Hamilton. Because I think that the partnerships that we need to build and work together, because we're going to have some challenging times during the budget season. We know we all have capital needs. So, you know, I think that the best way that we're going to get through all of this is really working together. And I, you know, thank you, the superintendent, for really starting that process. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them and...
So I don't, right now, I just want to introduce myself, Dave Palito. I'm sorry, I actually popped in earlier and I was trying to be here. I was trying to be in two places at once. Actually, I had another meeting that I was on the phone with in Boston, so I apologize. But I definitely want to reach out to you and start that communication. Been a long time Wenham resident and so this is my fourth year on the board. So definitely try and give you some backstory from my perspective too, which I'm sure is always helpful.
We have an open door policy, so just, we'll set up a time. Happy to meet with you.
Excellent.
One of the things I would add to what Anthony has said is that both Joe, our town manager, and Hamilton and Anthony met with myself, our Director of Facilities. We walked through all of our elementary schools and they really were taking a close look at the state of our elementary schools. And really, I, it was like, what, 99 degrees out that day? And, and our elementary schools are not air-conditioned, but we spent a good deal of time. Some of the principals were available to add extra insight and history to kind of where we've been, but also where we need to go in terms of having safe and healthy learning environments for our kids. And it, I know that I left feeling really energized at the possibilities for us working together collaboratively. And next week, believe it or not, we're already talking about FY21 budget. Benny and I are going to be meeting with both Anthony and Joe from Hamilton and their finance people so we can start strategizing on a collaborative plan so that we can have a much more transparent and inclusive budget process this year. And it's, I think this is just such a unique opportunity for all of us to be here and really get to design how we want to support and serve our community. And I'm excited for that partnership and thank you for your...
Yeah, it really is. It's a really unique opportunity right now that you have really three relative new leaders now in the community. Joe's just over, just at a year now and then myself and the superintendent. So it's a great opportunity to, to build those relationships and work collaboratively across the board on all the issues.
No, I agree. Definitely a time for growth. I just want to thank you for being, it takes some time out coming, being here tonight and look forward to actually working with you in the future.
Same. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Welcome, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're actually going to work on the strategic blueprint.
Yes, if I could give a brief introduction, we have a riveting workshop planned for you tonight. The leadership team has been working collaboratively on this workshop for the last couple of weeks. And just to explain our strategy behind the strategy, we could have just presented the strategic blueprint to you and asked for you to listen and then vote. But we decided as a leadership team that we really think it would be much more beneficial to bring you through some of our thinking, to expose you to some of the ways we've been challenging our thoughts and our beliefs about what learning is. And to really hone in on this question, what is the future we want to create? And so you're going to have a chance to, we'll leave this room and go into the gym for the workshop, so that portion won't be televised. But we felt it was important for the introduction to be televised, so we're in here for the intro. Then you'll get to have a little movement break, just like we do with our kids, and head into the gym for the workshop where you'll work through some different centers or provocations. And Eric will explain that when he does the intro. But before Eric does the intro, I wanted to invite our new Director of Facilities, Tom Geary, to the podium to talk a little bit about the furniture that you're going to experience in the workshop. Because we really are trying to get you thinking forward and thinking about the future of education. Not only in what the, the teaching and learning aspects, aspects should look like, but what the learning environment should look like. So Tom?
Thank you for having me. As you know, I recently started right after Labor Day for the district. I've been warmly welcomed, so it's a pleasure to be here and working for the communities. What you'll find in the gymnasium, we were, I was able to partner with a vendor, so we kind of set up a showroom for you, right? Of what you'll see in modern learning environments. Flexible furniture that can be moved into different configurations. So as you walk through the high school presently, you'll see that a lot of kids are still sitting in the same sled desks that they, that they have since the building opened. So when I come to you to present the budget, I'm sorry, part of the capital plan, you'll notice that there'll be some money earmarked for furniture. So I wanted you to be able to see that hands-on and be able to see some of the different types of furniture that are out there that help improve the learning environment. So we had a very nice vendor that came up and set up quite a few pieces for us to try out, so. Enjoy.
And as you start to get into the schools, is it next week we're doing our elementary school visits? You're going to notice that they have lots of new furniture in the schools, some of it, most of it through the Ed Fund grants. So what you see here isn't necessarily what exists in our schools, but they're just different options to get you thinking about how we can think differently about learning environments. And so with that, I'm going to invite Eric Tracy, our high school principal, to the podium. And his intern is here tonight as well. So I'll let Eric do the intro and, like I said, they'll get us started and then we'll head into the workshop.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Raina Borke. She is a science teacher at the high school and also doing her plunge into the administrative internship this year. So she's had quite the summer with us. She's joined us this time. So what is the future we want to create? What is the future we want to create for our kids, our teachers, and our classrooms? And what's driving this future for us? Why are we here? What are we talking about the future for? One industrial revolution has already begun and many of our schools don't even realize it. You think back to the first, when you had steam, then we had electricity, and then we had computing and communications. And then finally, we're in this world now where the digital is starting to interact with humanity. So digital and biological will start to interact. AI will start to move into the working world and start to take over some of the things that we do and that we take for granted, as you'll see through this presentation. And certainly will drive the future of our kids. Remember, kindergarten kids will graduate in 2032. Many of the jobs that we see now won't be there in 2032 or 2034 or 2036 when they get out of college. This summer, we challenged our teachers to take advantage of summer book groups. So several of the administrators read books with our teachers. Eighty teachers, eighty of our teachers took on this challenge to read what school could be in search of deeper learning and building schools who went up. These were opportunities and wide-open discussions about what could be, what we can do with our schools, what we can do in our classrooms, how we can give people agency, including teachers and students. For me, as a moderator of one of those groups, it was fantastic to read the posts from our teachers and read their final reflections about how they would apply this to what they do in their classrooms.
Okay, so when we consider what we want our students leaving our district with, we need to consider the future of business. We need to consider the future of our world. We need to consider what sort of skills, values, abilities that businesses are going to value with their current employees as well as in their future employees. We have to keep in mind that most of the jobs that our students are going to be applying to aren't even developed yet. The business world is constantly changing. And so we need to make sure that our learners are adaptable and they're lifelong learners. As Eric said, our kindergartners, they are graduating in 2032. So what are we doing to ensure that our kindergartners and all of our generals that are graduating from our district are coming out with the skills and abilities that businesses are going to value in their timeline? Do they have emotional intelligence? Do they engage in active learning? Do they have leadership skills? Can they communicate? We have to consider that as a district.
So did you know that one-third of Bloomberg News is published by computers? Not people. Nobody, no human touches one-third of the articles published by Bloomberg News. Completely done by computers. This is the future of what we're seeing in journalism. And this AI will certainly begin to take over many, many other areas in the world. Think about the AI we have in our houses and our watches and our phones. All those questions we get to ask and get answered at an instant. Think about that now integrated with human nature and all the things that we like to do and all the things that we do at work, really driving to increase the speed of growth. Our schools need to be able to match this and help our kids to understand that the future is moving really quickly. Our schools need to be able to match this and help our kids to understand that the future is moving really quickly.
So on our opening day, uh, presentation, we had a speaker, Will Ri- uh, Will Richardson, and he asked a lot of thought-provoking questions. And one of them was, under what conditions do people learn most productively? And not just in a school, like just learning experiences in general. What most people would say and what our staff reflected upon were safe learning environments, engaging activities that have real-world application. They made a difference in their lives. They felt relevant to them. They created connections with their teachers, with their mentors. What they didn't say, um, was on this list, sitting in a row in those sled desks that we mentioned a little bit earlier, having precise blocks that are exactly forty-five or sixty minutes, a standardized test that focused on grading. So why do we see more of the things that are in this column, what people never say in our classrooms, more frequently than what we do say about important conditions that make productive learning environments?
So recently, our commissioner posted a report called Our Way Forward. You'll get it tonight, if you haven't read it already. It's available online. It's a quick read, interesting. But he writes several sections about the more closely we match students' daily experience in school and the expectations they were encountering in college, in their careers, and as citizens navigating a complex world. That report really gets at helping our kids to be citizens of this complex world. Again, the world that we currently don't really have a good people. Also, the goal of education is not to possess knowledge. Instead, leveraging the technologies that we have, including AI, and learning to access knowledge and learning to be learners, that mine it for relevance and apply it in new ways. For us, these opportunities exist. We need to take full advantage of them in our classrooms. It's not about teachers standing in front of the room and giving knowledge anymore, because most of what's happening in school, we can ask Google for. And that's a reality of what we're doing. So how do we now help our teachers to start to turn the corner and look differently at the things that they're doing in the classroom? And why are we even in the classroom when learning can take place anytime, anywhere? We have these technologies already built into our system. We need to help our people, all of our people, understand how to use them and take advantage of them for the future of our kids.
I'm gonna switch to Carolyn Shettyack. She's gonna take over from here.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Shettyack. I'm the new principal at the Winthrop Elementary School. And I'm, um, the facilitator tonight, which basically means I'm gonna kind of boss everybody around and tell you where to go. So tonight, we're gonna, when we leave this room and go into the gymnasium, we're gonna get into some small groups, and we've already assigned people to groups, and I'll show you in a minute what groups you're in. And there are three rotation stations where each of the group facilitators is gonna give you a provocation for something for you to think about and discuss with your groups. Your groups will involve school committee members, some teachers from Hamilton-Wentham, and some, oh, and so, and students, and, and then a- administrators who aren't being the leaders of the groups. And all of the provocations are gonna allow us to explore the future that we want to create, considering what Eric was talking about. So, uh, there'll be four to six people. Each, uh, rotation will be about twenty minutes, and you're gonna discuss the prompts, and the, um, the leaders at each table will talk about the provocations. So, take a look. Try to find your name on your group. When we go into the other room, you'll see the table numbers, um, the tables are numbered. And when we do the rotation, the odd numbers are gonna rotate, table one, three, five, and back to one, and then the other group is two, four, six. So we've got two parallel groups doing three activities. Does that make sense? All right. Do we need to bring something? Do we need to bring something to write with, or?
We have pens for you, but you can bring them if you'd like your own.
I do like my own pen.
He need to finish the construction.
George, George Jetson.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, it was good. I liked it.
Everyone's dinner. I had, I had two cubes of sweet potatoes before I left the house.
I was in the schools all day, so. Then I did my other.
Which one?
Oh, yeah, they're, yeah, that's, it's part of it.
Okay.
I'm purposely keeping this. I'm going to hand it to you to try and get to them after I wrote the notes in the back.
Oh, who do we give the exit ticket to?
Eric. Is the TV guy over there?
We go.
Is it Thomas?
All right, we're somewhat back. I think we're waiting on Vinnie and then Peter. I think just went to get Vinnie. But we can, um, so my first thought is, it's actually, i- i- it's kind of a shame that that couldn't be, um, filmed, because a- at this point, I almost feel like, um, everyone at home is sort of missing out. And one of the questions I ended up asking at the end, um, to Jen was, you know, just thinking about, in, back in the, um, spring, late spring, you know, around May, June, they were gonna actually present the strategic blueprint to us. And I said, was this that strategic blueprint? And the answer was yes. So that was really impressive to me. Whether or not this is the format they're gonna do, uh, you know, she couldn't be a hundred percent sure because they hadn't got to that yet, but, um, it was really impressive. And, you know, I know personally, I think I'd like to try and figure out a way to bring this to the public in a upcoming meeting, probably sooner rather than later. Cause my second note here is, 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 and I'd said, and none of you are in my personal group, but I said it a few times, where I, I'm sort of a, an optimistic cynic. And I, i- and that's sort of how I view everything. Sometimes people just see the cynic and not the fact that I am in fact optimistic. But, um, you know, I, I think when you're thinking about things like creative educational approaches in a environment like Hamilton-Wentham, where we already sort of are successful, that sometimes change can be difficult. So my question is sort of over, over again is, you know, especially towards the teachers that are in, in my group, where, you know, you being the front-facing, um, you know, eyes of the district towards the parents, how do you think they're gonna accept this? You know, the answers I sort of got were different, whereas if elementary school tends to be very, very, very receptive, and as you get high, into the older grades, and it's a little closer to, um, you know, needing to get ready for college and how you're doing that, it, it can be a little bit scarier for them. So I, I think these conver- that this is definitely needs to go out to the public, and I, there's, uh, cause there was a lot of great, great things going on in that conversation, that I think a lot of parents would be very, very, very happy to, to know more about. So I don't know if anyone else has anything else they wanna add?
No, I'd just like to thank the leadership team for putting all their heart and soul into that. It's a lot of years of work, not just the last.
But that was a really cool way to present it too. You know, really a lot better than dozing off at a PowerPoint presentation, you know? But again, so now I feel like we're being cryptic, because everyone at home has no idea what we're talking about. But, um, you know, hopefully we can bring that to, you know, uh, front-facing a lot sooner rather than later.
And I think, um, you have a real opportunity with your school committee goals to connect to this, cause one of your goals is about creating a vision, and that isn't done in a vacuum. So thinking about how do we replicate this and/or create other experiences that in- include the broader community are some of the things that, um, we're hoping tonight would spark within you as a school committee.
So does that move us to the next agenda item?
So, um, yeah, so I guess it is a, a good segue for the next agenda item, as long as everyone's.
Can we officially welcome Tom?
Yeah, cause is this your, this is not your first meeting, is it your first meeting?
It says first meeting.
Welcome, Tom.
Welcome, Tom.
So student body president, right? So, um, welcome. If it gets, if it gets late, there's a lot, feel free to, all right? Thanks. Happy to have you here. So we have, uh, the beginnings of our Hamilton-Wentham, uh, nineteen-twenty school committee's SMART goals. That we have some notes in here. Did, I, I know we broke up it to sort of assign subcommittees, uh, the goals. Does everybody, and every, anybody feel comfortable speaking about what came up in their subcommittee towards these goals?
I can tell you about our process.
Sure.
So we, um, I drafted some goals for, for, uh, the subcommittee, our subcommittee members to respond to. And so we haven't finalized them yet, but we will, it's on the agenda, it should be on the agenda for the next meeting, to be able to finalize those. So we should have them ready for the full committee to review.
And I'm sorry, which goal was yours?
Uh, third.
The budget.
Budget.
Developing the budget.
Working backwards, I guess, just cause I'm here. Uh, I didn't have a chance to meet with Carrie about this, but I did sort of write down a few notes about, um, clarifying our vision, which, um, you know, I can either sort of do this, or I have no problem sort of pushing out to you guys, just sort of, uh, a thought process. And what they got actually written on here, uh, from a conversation I had had with Dr. Kukaburger, was the possibility of actually, um, reading this book. So I'm actually happy that it came about in here. Yeah, I, I do like the idea of, um, sort of being on the same page as, as our leadership team and, and just seeing, you know, I've, I've heard some great things about it. So I, I think that would be a good idea for us, um, as a goal for a school committee, you know, to sort of, it'll take a couple of months, cause God knows, I don't read, I don't have much time to read, reread anymore.
It's also available on Audible.
So, ooh.
What school could be?
What School Could Be, by Ted Dintersmith. Um, so I, like I said, I have notes that we can obviously develop out, um, more. And I think that's sort of where the process needs to, needs to be at this point. But i- and I definitely have more notes that I want to add after sitting through that presentation. On, on just how, how we want to come about a vision. Cause a- again, I, I think where we have a unique opportunity, um, to really create the foundation for, for significant change within the district for long-term success. So we should take this pretty seriously and, and, and not be afraid to be bold.
All right, so the policy subcommittee had a special meeting so that we could, um, do this by the deadline. Um, and you have that here. So our goal is to create a team, and the process for doing that, measuring that, is to improve by, um, a scaled score on a rubric, which I don't think we have here tonight, but.
Yeah, I didn't print it, but it's linked.
So in order to do that, um, we need to, uh, do a pre-assessment on this rubric. We'll do one later on. I think we had talked about maybe January. And then another one, um, right towards the end of the year, even though it's after the election. Part of the team is, one of the things an effective team does, or an effective school committee does, is they meet, um, informally to discuss difficult topics. So we feel that one of our key, um, actions should be to schedule a budget workshop to informally discuss it versus a presentation necessarily. And we also, um, would continue to use this, um, school committee protocols to self-assess. And then we should try and approve these, um, or modify them by sometime around, I think it's December. So our first benchmark is to take that assessment at our next meeting. Um, and then we'll do that again in February, and then again in June after the election. Okay, so now, uh, we're looking to have, um, a budget workshop before our tentative budget needs to be approved. And so we have two options, and we should probably start thinking about which one of those we want. Uh, one would be a Saturday. It would be like from nine to two. We would have like a lunch, um, and we would have the various principals and leadership in here to, um, present to us. Uh, the other option is, um, to do it in two successive nights, uh, Monday and a Tuesday. Those dates are here.
So when would you think that would be? Like December, January?
It's right here, the dates are right on here.
Oh.
You're right, January.
We feel that in order to build a team, we need to, um, one of the things that a s- successful school committee or a functioning, a highly successful school committee does is they provide the superintendent with feedback. Um, we feel that we need to do that, um, by December, do a formative assessment, sort of go through what's happened so far, and then evaluate what sort of, um, information we would still need going forward. And then, I already mentioned this, once we have done this a few times and looked at the results, that we should actually adopt a protocol by, um, December first.
That January fourth date is actually the winter break.
I'm sorry, say that again?
January fourth date is actually winter break.
Correct. It's, we come back on the second, I believe. Yeah. We come back on the second, third, and then we have, it's right after winter break.
Okay.
So the idea with that, um, and this is part of the larger budget process that will roll out at capital financial planning first and then bring to the full committee. Um, I'm bringing that. I'm bringing that, we're presenting that to leadership on October tenth to kind of get their feedback about the process. But, the idea is that this would really, you'd be able to hear during the workshop directly from principals and directors about their individual budgets, what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, what's some of the return on investment from FY twenties investments that we've made within the FY twenty budget. And then, on Wednesday night, when it's time for you to approve the tentative budget, Vinny and I would collaboratively give you a high-level overview of the proposal. But, the idea is that this isn't the superintendent's budget, this isn't the assistant superintendent of finances budget. At this point, it's the leadership team's budget and we're really kind of handing it over to you. We're making our recommendations as the professional educators and then you have more decisions to make based on what, what we're, what's actually going to stay in the budget and what might need to be refined.
So, that tentative date would be the eighth that we vote on the tentative budget?
Yes, because that's the seventy-five days before the town meeting.
Is four days enough to make any changes if we wanted to make changes?
It's tentative budget.
So, then you have until the twelfth, I think, to make further refinements. But, that, those, that's the timeline that you all approved in a previous meeting, I think it might have been in early July or end of June. So, we were just kind of working backwards from those dates.
Oh, I just know that in the past, this board has been nervous about what a tentative budget actually means and the fact that it could be changed.
But, all along, Dr. Kukunberger is going to be working with our finance working group, so it's not like it will be unknown to the committee, it's just, would be working through a subcommittee.
So, I have a question, like, how do you define the governance team? Is it everybody who's, who's sitting on this table?
Can you be specific where we're talking?
Well, it says eighty-five percent of the governance team will complete a thing, eighty-five percent of the govern, so who's the govern?
So, the governance team actually includes us and also, you're welcome to fill it out, and it would include Dr. Kukunberger and Vinny.
Okay.
Yeah.
And fortunately, the budget workshop dates, I'm going to be in Oregon, so you can proceed without me. But, just to let you know, I won't, I probably won't, I won't be here.
As I said, I'm on vacation.
Will you be here for the vote on the tentative budget on the eighth?
On the eighth, yeah.
So, you wouldn't be here the two days before, but you'd just be here on the eighth?
Right, right.
And I have to say, and I already know, I'm out of town too. I'm gone as every January, I'm gone from the fifth through the twelfth.
So, you wouldn't be here for the vote anyways?
Yeah, and I won't be here for the vote, so I could do, I can make the January fourth nine to two lunch with lunch the Saturday, I could do that. I could not do the sixth and seventh, and I won't be here for the vote.
So, we don't necessarily have to decide today?
Right, no, I was just thinking that same thing. I, I really like the idea, I just think we'd, want to look at that date and obviously we have to run it by the leadership team too to make sure that they're on board.
Difficult to have it earlier because it's Christmas time.
Right, oh yeah.
And if you have it earlier than that, then the leadership team hasn't really had the time to do the work that they need to do, so. You know, I think we need to really, well, there's a couple of things, I think, one, really need to figure out why we have to give them a budget seventy-five days in advance. Other than we agreed to it fifty years ago, and then the other, the other one is, you know, how are we going to make it happen, so.
Vinny and I can share this when we meet with the town manager and town administrator next week as well and see if there's any flexibility with the dates and report back.
So, what is the process for finishing and approving the goals?
So, at this point, we are expecting the capital subcommittee to be meeting and coming across with those, with their, finalizing theirs. Since I'm working independently and I'm not the biggest fan of doing that, I plan on sending out my thoughts to y'all to get feedback.
That wouldn't be allowable.
Well, I could send the thoughts out, so, hmm, how can we do this? I wasn't even thinking that, thank you.
Make a suggestion?
I'd love it.
I'm wondering if there is another member, maybe from the capital financial planning committee, because there's three of you that would join with David to help work on that, so he's not having to do that alone. Not that you wouldn't then still be able to be on the capital financial planning subcommittee, but just so that he has a thought partner. Or I'm happy to work with David.
Do we know where the other person that's on that committee is?
So, no.
We, we haven't heard from, she hasn't responded to any of your communication.
So, I did speak to her briefly and she has some stuff going on personally, but I'm not sure where she is, sort of physically, so.
Well, I'm happy to meet with you, David, if that works.
Oh, that, that would be great, I mean.
Unfortunately, I can't do it, I'm actually leaving town tomorrow morning at five AM, so. I'm going out of town for a week, so I won't be able to help, I've got a lot going on.
Are you not wanting to volunteer?
I'll, I'll help out.
Honestly, you're probably the easiest to let to.
To get ahold of, I know, I, I'd help, but it's going to be hard to get me, get my attention sometimes.
If, since there's only two of us, do we need to make this a subcommittee or?
Yes.
Yeah, see, need a motion. Need a motion.
I move that we add Michelle Horgan to the communications subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Alright, so, I plan on having that done by next.
So, that's something we'll have on our agenda the next time, or October sixteenth?
Julie, is it possible if I send you something that you can disseminate it on Google Docs, so then that way there's no conflict, conflict?
Meaning what?
Violation.
We just can't respond.
For our working group, our subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Because that's a report.
Well, it's an updated from what Jean has, so I have it in different color, so he can see to, to look, so everybody can look at it ahead of time.
Yeah, I mean, you just, we can't respond to it.
You can send anything out, we just can't respond, that's what I was saying.
We can put it on Google Docs, so.
No, you cannot, that's communication through electronic. You can put it, you can share the document, but you just can't be all on Google Docs commenting on the document.
But, if Jean has provided a co, a document and Stacy's commented on it, that's it, that's commenting.
As long as you're not having a discussion and a dialogue, like if, you mean it like if she highlights something and she puts a comment on it like I'm wondering about?
Yep.
As long as you're not having it, and Jean's not then saying, well, let's do this, let's make the, you know, and you're not making decisions on it.
No, I've just added to it, I haven't made comments or anything, it's just, I've added to it, expanded on it.
I would check on that. Edit, editing documents successively through Google Docs is not allowed.
Well, and you have a subcommittee meeting on the fifteenth before the next school committee meeting.
Okay.
So, that would be. It would be, you would submit that in preparation for that meeting.
Yes.
Yes. No. Okay. I still vote no.
We voted.
So, are we going to move these SMART goals to our next meeting then?
Yep.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, selecting delegate and alternate for MASC conference.
I nominate Michelle Horgan to be our delegate to the MASC conference.
Second?
With no alternate available.
It's yours by default.
Second?
My discussion was asking her if she was going and she said she's going.
I, I will be there, so I'm happy to represent the district at the MASC conference.
So, do we want to put those resolutions on for the next school committee meeting?
Yeah, we need to discuss those next meeting, MASC res, yes.
We still have to vote on this, though.
Yes.
David, you want to call for a vote?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Thank you, Michelle.
Alright, up next is the renewal co-op with Hamilton Wenham as host of gymnastics with Manchester Essex while adding Penguin Hall.
If I could, I'd like to invite our athletic director, Craig Gennualdo, to the podium to give you a brief overview and then answer any questions you have, once there's a motion and a second.
Good evening.
Craig. So, we need a motion and then a second, and then Craig can add to the discussion.
Do we have a document?
No, Craig's going to give you an overview, but you have to first put it on the table, but with a motion and a second.
So, what would the motion be?
Yeah, what would you like?
The motion would be to renew the co-op with Hamilton Wenham as host of gymnastics with Manchester Essex while adding Penguin Hall.
So, I make a motion?
You could just say so moved.
So, so moved?
Do you have a sec?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, our gymnastics team, though doing very well the last couple of years, traditionally is pretty small. But, if we were just to accept Manchester Essex back and us, we would have somewhere in the neighborhood of four to six athletes. We're looking to Penguin Hall, who has in the vicinity of two to four athletes, to come up with a team. Gymnastics is a very niche sport and with four rotations of uneven bars, beam, floor routine, and the vault, having small numbers is difficult because if you don't have enough variety, you're forcing athletes in to do a certain rotation that they may not be fully comfortable with. We're simply looking to have a program. We have a great coach who was in front of you last year when he won coach of the year and we congratulated him for that. He's a phenomenal instructor, super safe, knows his stuff. The, the participants at both Manchester, which would be a renewal, and Penguin Hall would share our user fee. The cost to the district is already fixed. You have graciously, over the last couple of years, decided to incur fifty-nine point something percent of the cost of every sport. And that's, that cost is fixed. What would be variable is the users make up the other forty-one or so percent. If there's three users or eight users or ten users, those users divide up the other forty-one percent. So, there's no additional cost whatsoever to the district to allow these two schools to compete with us. It simply allows us to have a more complete team, so athletes can feel comfortable on the different apparatuses that they have to perform on. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
What did Academy at Penguin Hall do last year?
The school committee denied their request.
Yes, I remember that.
And so, they weren't able to participate in gymnastics.
What are they going to bring to the table this year? Are they, can they provide transportation or to help out?
So, I don't think it would be appropriate to ask their athletes to pay any more than what our athletes pay in terms of a user fee. For example, our girls, we have girls in our school who are a guest in the Marblehead Hockey Co-op, they pay the Marblehead fee. We have wrestlers in the Salem High School program, they pay the Salem fee. The, what they bring to us is the ability to have a more complete team and a better experience for each of the other athletes on the team by allowing different variety within the apparatuses and having a more full team. I did watch the HW CAM version of the meeting last year when this was discussed, I wasn't able to be there that night and I regret that deeply. And it was said that you only need six athletes to compete in gymnastics. That's like saying you need five in basketball or eleven in football. Six, the top six score, but the more variety you have, the more comfort level each athlete has and the creation of a more complete team and a greater experience. So, they, so that's what they bring.
So, did I miss the notice that winter sports signups have happened? Because I did not see that.
They have not happened yet.
So, how do we know how many freshmen are going to join?
So, ultimately, we don't, it's a range. I'm basing it off of who I know is in the building and some of the freshman classes anecdotal. If we waited for this process until we had registration, it would be too late. And so, when we open registration, we're hoping to open it to Manchester and Penguin Hall as opposed to opening it for us and then having it be very late in the process for them to come along.
So, Craig, the addition of Penguin Hall will add benefit to our students and will not take away from our students?
No, the same way that hosting Manchester is a benefit to our student athletes because they can have a better experience. The numbers in gymnastics have dwindled over the years. For whatever reason, some sports go up and down by nature and we tend to have in the vicinity of four to six gymnasts in our building at any given time.
So, there's no negative to our students, only enhancements and benefit to our, to our student athletes?
I don't see any negative whatsoever.
How many stu, how many athletes are at Manchester Essex? If we have four to six, how much does, how many do Manchester Essex have?
They'll have this year, I've been told, between two and four.
So, so I don't remember hearing last year that six was the magic number for a team, I heard that ten was the magic number for a team because of what you had talked about, needing to have alternates for injury and comfort level. So, if both are at their max, we're kind of at the max team.
I mean, we've had gymnastics teams in the past since I've been here that had eighteen student athletes. So.
I'm sorry.
So, it, so where, the most will be at, in my best-guest educated opinion, is twelve, that's the absolute max.
So, can I ask you, how much does it cost us to provide gymnastics for our four students?
So, off the top of my head, I'm, I don't have that number, I could email the committee that tomorrow. If I had to guess, and it's a guess only, please don't hold me to this exact number, I want to say the district pays, the cost to run the sports, somewhere in the neighborhood of thirteen or fourteen thousand, of which the district used to pay twenty percent and now we pay fifty-nine point something percent.
I thought we voted in fifty percent, I didn't realize it had gone fifty-nine percent.
It's fifty-nine and change.
So, I guess my next question would be, how do we decide? Like, maybe it's not a sport that has enough interest for us to be putting forth resources.
So, that's fair, I would say this budget has already passed for this year, that's a worthy conversation to have going forward, but it's already been approved for this season.
And I would just add that, you know, I think, building off our conversation today, we want to try to find that passion for all of our kids and what's going to, you know, sometimes extracurriculars are what get kids out of bed in the morning. There's also tons of research that shows that students who participate in extracurricular activities, not just athletics, are far more likely to be successful at life, not just college or career readiness, at life in general. And I'm happy to share some of that research with all of you. One of the things that Craig and I talked about in this, as we, you know, sort of assess the pros and cons of letting other communities join our kids, is the value of social networks and we know that social networks are one of the number one most influential safety nets that can exist in any human's life. And so, the more our kids can connect with other kids from other communities and have more dynamic relationships, the better off they're going to be. Particularly when it comes to a sport like gymnastics, well, a lot of, a lot of extracurriculars, whether it's theater or sports, you really form strong bonds with folks and if you've ever seen, like, I haven't seen high school gymnastics yet, but I know at the collegiate level, it, even if they're not competing, they're still involved and they often know each other's routines and they support each other in a lot of social, emotional ways beyond just the physical challenges that the sport offers. So, I think for me, you know, I would hope that you would agree to. So, I think, for me, you know, I would hope that you would agree to renew this agreement with Manchester Essex and include Penguin Hall just so that our kids have a chance to build more relationships.
And if I could piggyback off that, just two quick things. Gymna-, if we don't have gymnastics, to answer your question, those athletes aren't necessarily going to go to another sport. They've grown up in gymnastics. It's, it's a very particular set of skills that oftentimes, that I can only think off the top of my head that there was one other gymnast last year that played, from Hamilton Wenham, that played another sport. Most of them just did gymnastics from the time they were very young. And to speak to Dr. Kuchenberger's point about the community and the social networking, the way the gymnastics meets are set up is athletes from both teams are cheering for each other, talking to each other. They're not competing like they would in football, or basketball, or soccer. They're, they're truly engaged in the other's routine, and they spend the entire meet, or a lot of the meet, talking with both teams, so.
I just want to say, the budget is already set. So, allowing Penguin Hall and co-op-ing, renewing the co-op with Manchester Essex takes the burden off the parents of the athletes that are doing gymnastics. So, it's a win for the students, it's a win for the parents. There's, in my mind, there's no negative to the district. Only, only positive, and it puts us in a great light.
Right, I mean, and just the thought process from, coming from, you know, having run teams before. You know, I run a football team with twenty-two kids. I had one sick on Sunday, one forget a key piece of their equipment, and then two people get hurt, and mid-game, I'm scrambling for players because eighteen isn't enough, even though there's only eleven on the field. Right? This is gymnastics. How, I sprained my ankle walking down the stairs, right? So, how, you know, we need numbers to actually run a team. And, I mean, that's just really the bottom line.
I definitely channel my mother at the competitions. I look like this.
So, my one con-, well, I have several concerns, but one of my concerns is that, my experience was, when my son was on the swim team, is that all of the competitive athletes were on other teams. So, they're on the sharks, they're on the other teams. So, it's not like the kids aren't swimming, it's they're double swimming. So, you know, if we say.
What was that, they were done swimming?
They're double swimming. They're swimming for two teams at the same time, so.
But I will say that, excuse me, I don't mean to cut you off, but the high school sports is your, is, is your bona fide sport, and these kids are committed. You'll only get four years to compete in high school and be part of this team. And I strongly believe in co-op. I've been a coach of a co-op team when I was in Ipswich. I've had, there's nothing but positives and benefits to our athletes, to letting these kids get in here.
Not what I was saying. I was saying that those kids are competing, whether they were competing on our swim team or not, they were still competing at swimming because they belonged to other teams. And so, my question is, is how many of these athletes belong to the Yellow Jackets, or the Iron Rail, or the gymnastics team at the Y M C A?
But that's irrelevant.
So, so what I would say is, I have absolutely no idea. And the reason why I don't know is because, not because I don't care, not because it's not a worthy question, because it is, and I do care, but because during the high school season, they're at every practice and every competition. And I know that, you know, say what you want about the M I A and whatever, but their fundamental focus is on educational athletics, which is different than any A A U team, different than any club team. It's focused on ed-, the educational aspect of athletics, and I think there's something very, very deep and meaningful in remembering that you played a school-based sport. And so, that's how I'd answer that.
So, Craig, at the high school, if, uh, play, if someone plays a varsity sport, does that count towards A P E?
No, that's not allowed legally because we charge.
No. No. I'm, you know, I don't know what Penguin Hall does, but it doesn't for us. You know, if they asked us, is this person a bona fide team member, would say yes, they could do with that information what they choose.
It would be fantastic if we could, but the law does not allow that because we charge.
Charge being the user fee.
If we didn't charge a user fee, then we could, because that's free access to educational opportunity.
Right, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five to one. Thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Alright, now, see, a new co-op with Hamilton Wenham as guest for ski team.
So, this is for, this is for us to join with Manchester Essex?
We would be a guest in their co-op, yes.
So, we would need a motion and a second.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the new co-op with the Hamilton Wenham joining the Manchester Essex ski team.
Second.
Craig, could you give a little background?
Yes. So, for a number of years at Hamilton Wenham, we've had very anecdotal pockets. One person every couple of years, one, one family every third year say, hey, how about a ski team at Hamilton Wenham? And the numbers just don't match that need for us to have our own team. It just wouldn't make any sense. Over the last, I'd say, year and a half or so, I've had four or five families, pretty consistently, and it's the students that advocate for themselves and talk about student agency in the other room and all that. They've come down, you know, tried to find a new angle every third week. Hey, what if we did this for a ski team? What if we did that for a ski team? And they're really engaging, and they're really intelligent. And they've convinced me that there's, and, you know, I kept saying, well, come back to me with people that are going to do this. Come back to me, not with people that say, oh, I like to ski once a week, but are ready to ski competitively, have dryland training, do all this stuff, and we'll try to find a team in our league that we can maybe partner with and that would be willing to have us. Recently, the numbers at Manchester Essex have dipped some. And again, like gymnastics, it's a very specific skill set. It's not, you know, families grow up skiing and kids race, and they're not doing other things. They're not playing basketball, the other winter sports. They're skiing, they're ski families. And so, with Manchester Essex's numbers have dropped, and with our modest increase in participation to, I'd say between four and six girls and three or four boys. They were willing to host both our boys and our girls. They reached out to us. We were very interested. The kids were over the moon about the possibility. I told them it was in the very infant stages, but we had a meeting at school last week to gauge interest. There was a total of nine kids that came down. Whether that means nine will sign up, I don't know. But it seems like the interest there and the opportunity's there. As far as cost of the district, what I would suggest this year is, this was not budgeted for this year. I don't think the district should pay, my personal opinion, should have to pay any money toward this this year. A lot of co-, a lot of teams in the league, when there's a brand-new team, they'll say you have to be self-sustaining for X amount of time. I think Manchester Essex has said their athletes will pay four hundred and sixty dollars for a user fee this year. And I, I think our students should pay that. In the future, as we do for girls hockey, as we do for wrestling, if we want to pay the percentage that we pay for other athletes, we, we want to do that for them in the future. I think we could talk about that. I think it's a worthy discussion, but for this year, I don't think we have to. Manchester Essex has agreed to pay for our seasonal mountain pass for every athlete that we provide, which is another few hundred dollars. So, the families, I know would jump at that. I know from speaking with the, with some of the families that that's a very reasonable price. You know, as recently as a couple of years ago, we charged over a thousand dollars for hockey. One of those parents is sitting in the room that had a deal with that. So, I think this is a very modest user fee. And like, again, it's no cost to the district, and we're increasing participation, which, like, look, we've had the highest participation in the K P N League the last three years. We've been over seventy percent. That's astronomical. I love that that number's high, and this is only going to make it higher, because again, these athletes don't do anything else in the winter.
Do you have to file with the M I double A to?
So, that would be the last step. So, both buildings get their approval. Manchester Essex's school committee has already approved. Once we got the, if we were lucky enough to get the approval from this board, it would then go to the M I A for final approval. But we need the school committee approval here first. Yes.
Are the competitions held during the week, or on the weekend, or after school?
So, there's no school time missed, except for the very, very rare, maybe like a state tournament thing that's way out west, or if they, like, we have a ton of snow makeups that happen, but there's no planned school missed at all. Ninety percent of the regular season races would be held at Bradford, and I think there's one at Wachusett and maybe one at Neshoba, but they're all after school or on weekends, and no school time is missed.
So, it falls in line with the regular sports schedule?
It falls in line with the, yes.
After school.
Yep.
Craig, any other questions?
I think it's a great opportunity for the kids to add the sport.
Are uniforms provided for them, or how does that work? They provide their own equipment and stuff?
So, Manchester Essex would provide uniforms in line with whatever the M I A requires. Similar to, say, hockey, or lacrosse, or some, or even baseball. My best guess is that athletes provide their own equipment.
Excellent. Alright, all those in favor? Hannah, great, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Craig, for giving our student athletes another opportunity to excel.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
And thank you for being here, staying late on such a busy day.
Where else I'd rather be. Thank you very, very, very much. I'm grateful to all of you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Craig.
Thank you. Okay, up next is the superintendent search subcommittee or lead, which ties into the next one, which would be the superintendent search timeline. I was going through our minutes from last fall, I mean, sorry, last spring, trying to find the discussion we had about the superintendent search, and I couldn't come across it. And I'm wondering if it happened in June. I couldn't find the minutes, or I couldn't access the minutes in June, or July for that matter. And I had reached out to let Dr. Kuchenberger know about that today to see what was going on with that. But going from my memory about what we had discussed, I feel that we're already behind in the timeline we had originally laid out as far as creating a subcommittee and beginning the process of a search for the new sup-, for the next superintendent, whether it be a continuation or a new hire. Yeah.
From my, from what I was reading minutes, we had voted in Michelle Bailey, I want to make sure Bailey, not Horgan, to be the lead on this, and she had, we had had her work start a document, and then decided to hold off on it. So, I think at this point, from what was going on, we, the school committee needs to give her some direction of where to go.
Alright, so, so I actually do remember, um, Michelle Bailey being voted as the lead also, but, you know, like I said, I was trying to find the minutes, and I couldn't find the minutes, so I apologize about that. So, thank you for that. I think that's what this conversation is now, then, is sort of coming up with that direction to give, to give to Michelle and start creating a timeline. I guess the first conversation is, would be sort of a question to you, Michelle, is, do you feel comfortable as the lead? Or do you feel that you need, you would like a subcommittee to help, to help with the process?
I'm fine with that, but I brought, I can't find it now because I'm pretty sure it's on my computer and not on this iPad. I brought an R F P to the committee, and the committee was going to that, which had a timeline that put us into like, I think it was November, January, February. And the committee said it should be sooner, but then we never had a follow-up discussion. Is my recollection, and I'm sorry that I, like.
That's fine.
Now that we switched to tech-, the different technology, I don't have the document, and I didn't know we were going to discuss that, so.
So.
But yeah, I think it's fine. I think our question is, what is our timeline? One of the reasons we felt that one of our goals should be to have an interim or a formative assessment of the superintendent was, we feel that there needs to be some sort of decision around what is the search going to look like? Is it going to be a search where Dr. Kuchenberger is in a pool with other people, which may discourage people from applying because they'll see an internal candidate? Do we want to have a search of one where we decide if Dr. Kuchenberger should be, you know, have a public process? Should Dr. Kuchenberger be the superintendent? Or do we want to exclude her entirely because we feel that her performance isn't going to be what we need going forward and have a new pool? So, we felt like if we did that in December, then we would be ready, early December, that we would be ready to formalize a search after the first of the year.
So, I'm thinking before that, what needs to happen is community and sort of staff input, right? We want to see what the teachers think. We want to see what the administration thinks. We want to see what the parents think. And then that'll help us in deciding what our candidacy poll's going to look like, what we're actually looking for in a candidate, right? Is, is what's everyone looking for? I, I think that, feeling tremendously inspired by what happened in the, in the next room, and I think part of all that process is input on what leadership looks like. Right? If you want to make all this change within the classroom, what does a leader look like that's going to get us there? Or that's going to help facilitate the drive within the district? So, I, I can guarantee you, after seeing all the work that was put in there, that there are some people with some pretty strong ideas on what the, you know, long-term superintendent for this district is going to look like in order to get to where, you know, they've worked collabora-, collaboratively to sort of show us in the other room about what the strategic blueprint is going to look like.
So. What does that mean for the timeframe? I don't understand.
So, I think for the, I think, so for the timeframe is what I think we need to do, the immediate.
Did you find it?
The, the, the first thing we need to do is, you know, establish, and again, is this a subcommittee that needs to do this? Is this something that you could do yourself, or is this something for the whole committee? But putting together some sort of, be it public forum or poll that asks these questions to various stakeholders in our community.
Which Julie puts together some questions that we should look at and see if those are questions, you know, to look at. But also, as far as the community, I'm just saying, I happened to be at a social event, and several of them were teachers, and they were asking questions, and they, and then there were, you know, the community were there too, and the, the question came up. So, how are you going to look for a permanent superintendent? I said, well, we're looking, possibly, we haven't decided, you know, for community input, whatnot, and teachers, et cetera. And the community, or some of these people said, I won't even know what to say. I said, well, there's certain people who would know a little bit more than this, but, you know, people, were also saying, you know, we'd like the school committee to kind of, you know, help facilitate this, you know, however you're going to do it, and give some information.
Right, and, and so I think that's what we're doing, right? And I think, and so we have, we have to realize right here is, are we creating a subcommittee to do this? Because, no, most people in this community don't know what it takes to be an effective educational leader. So, you couldn't expect them to choose the superintendent. But what they could do is decide if they want a progressive school district, what they want in terms of being a, do you want an educational visionary? Or do you want a really good manager? You know, someone who's, you know, does, if the community says, like I said in my sort of little cynical thing earlier, sometimes I think this community does not want progressive education. I think they want traditional education with shiny new toys. Right? They want nicer buildings, they want nicer facilities. But, you know, but at the same time, I'm hoping, and I kind of think that I'm wrong, especially with the younger parents. Right? The older parents, I think, have a little bit of a harder time. We're like, well, how am I going to get my kid into Dartmouth? Right? It's a little harder to say, you know, let's try something new, right? And that's okay. But at the same time, I can't make up my mind myself on what other people think, so I want to hear what they want to think. But at the same time, I can't make up my mind myself on what other people think, so I want to hear what they want to think, what they, what they think. And that's what's going to sort of lead what we're looking for, when we're putting together what we want our ideal candidate to look like.
So I don't think a lead or a subcommittee is the right person then, for what you want? You are looking for a contractor to do that. You're looking for someone to come in and facilitate those community meetings. Someone who's done it before.
Maybe that's what it is.
And, you know, like I've mentioned before, Glenn Kucher will tell you, one of the top ten worst meetings he's ever facilitated was our decision about whether or not to take a similar situation and put that candidate into the pool. He has experience doing that. So the meeting was, you know, well-attended and was facilitated, and because he'd done it before, it was done well. But to ask us, who don't do that, to do it would be not it. So I, my opinion is, if we're going to do that, then we need to engage the services of a search committee.
Which, I, I think we had sort of said we were okay with doing before.
Yep.
But I mean, I, I think we, you know, and, and that's a very acceptable answer, right? That's a very acceptable answer. But I, I just think we sort of, now's the time to say, okay, let's do that. How are we going to go about doing that? And that's really where the lead, do we want a lead or a subcommittee to do that? Because it's work.
The timeframe that was not accepted was to put out the RFQs on September, or December second, receive the quotes by the nineteenth, and to interview the potential people who would do the work on the twenty-second of January.
Yeah, so that's to even do, that's to find, if I'm correct.
Correct.
The firm to even then go out and do the surveys.
Correct. Correct.
Right?
So if we want to accelerate that, then we would do it sooner.
But that procurement search would have backed into a timeline of getting to a superintendent, right?
But that's already the end of January.
Say that again, from the beginning?
What's that?
That's already the end of January.
When you, right, but if I remember though, like the, the, because you had to do two, you had to do, you had to go through a procurement process in order to find a contractor.
Right.
Right, a consultant. So if I remember, that timeframe for the procurement process backed into when we would be going into a search.
Oh, you're right, it did.
There's no way that we would just sort of come up with these arbitrary dates.
You're right, it did.
And miss a potential opportunity to pick up a superintendent, right? So I have to imagine that we were smart enough last year to say, like, that timeframe.
Yeah, it would, if we wanted to have the, it would be completed by April thirtieth.
The whole search, yes.
The whole search.
Right, that would make sense, right, because you want to get one before the school ends.
Yeah, but that's still really late, so.
Right, so we can accelerate that, but I think.
Right? And remember how up to the wire we were in May?
Well, yeah, but this is all of the work. That means the person has accepted, and you have a contract, it would be done by the thirtieth.
I still think that's two months too late.
Okay, well then we need to send out the RFP next week.
Yeah, and I think we need to use the stages, right? If we're, if we're in agreement generally, that, that we should, we should hire out, the, find someone who can provide the services to help facilitate a search with all the, and we can tell them this is what we want to do, how we want to conduct the search, right? We want to have community-focused groups, we want to have a survey of the staff, we want to have da, 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 that's, that's our prerogative, right? But if we want to engage the services of a firm for the search, that's where we should start now, right? By issuing, well, not today, not tonight, but like issuing the RFP in order to find that firm, right? Vinnie, you're chief, you've certified as CPO, Chief Procurement Officer? Right, okay, so then that helps, because we can't just do the procurement ourselves.
So the only issue I have is that we need to be sure and have a tandem process.
Yep.
That, so, there needs to be some point when Dr. Kuchenberger is assessed as, as either a candidate that can be in the pool, or cannot be in the pool. And that leads to a whole bunch of other situations that we need to assess. And I think that that would need to happen, like, right when we have our decision-making process with who we're going to hire, because they're going to have to help us do that process also. So if.
That can be part of the RFQ though, couldn't it?
No, that's separate.
Sure, but we have to do the assessment.
Yeah, it's not part of the RFQ.
Right, but the fact that they.
So if we're going to do the assessment in December, then do we want to engage people to do something before we're ready to do it?
Alright, I, I, I'm confused on, I, I think the independent assessment of Dr. Kuchenberger is different than beginning the process of finding a search firm to begin this process of the search.
Yeah, but.
And, so, my thoughts would be, and, and this is something, again, that I think could go into the RFQ, possibly, is, do we put that out to the community? On whether or not they feel that they want to include Dr. Kuchenberger in, as part of, you know, that process? I don't know, I'm sort of.
Well, what about, I mean, you know, if we're trying to get out to the community, say we have a forum, we're also reviewing Dr. Kuchenberger, if she's part of this, we all, you still are saying, shouldn't we make the decision of where we're at with Dr. Kuchenberger? Or you're saying to put the RFQ out right away?
I don't think either, either way, I don't really think that, you know, Dr. Kuchenberger, and I'm sorry, we keep talking sort of through here, really needs to be part of this process more than sort of helping, you know, maybe like, oh, here are the resources that you want to look into. I don't think we really need to, especially if we're hiring out a firm, there's really nothing she needs to be involved with in the process itself.
I don't think that's what Stacy was saying.
That's not what I was saying.
Okay, but I thought you said if she was in the process.
Well, what, you know, what.
Under consideration as an employee.
If, you know, she's had wanted to be under consideration, and, you know, the process from, you know, we want to know, is she, you know, do, does the community, do we, based on our rubrics of evaluating her, do we want to just keep her on, you know, as the superintendent? Or are we going to go through that process and, you know, go out with an RFQ of, you know, this, looking for a superintendent?
I, I think we need to go through the entire hiring process, and here's why. I think we, in the spring, we made it pretty clear that we're going to go through two hiring processes. And.
That was when we thought we were going to have someone who was a retired, experienced superintendent, but that plan changed.
So, but I think to sort of change course now would look.
There's nothing wrong with changing course, I mean.
So, well, except for the fact that you've actually been.
And there's nothing wrong with asking the public, do you believe that the current superintendent should continue?
But I think that's part of that process, that, that, but again, that's part of that process that we're looking for a consultant to help us with. I, I don't disagree with that at all.
But I don't think that Dr. Kuchenberger has had enough time for the community to have a clue as to whether or not they would like for her to continue, which is why I think doing it more in the January timeframe would give that process, because by then, we will have been through the fall, school will have started, there will have been a presentation of a budget, and we'll have some confidence around her skills that the community can judge. But right now, if we were to start a process, there's not a lot to judge.
Yeah, but it's not going to happen next week, right? In two weeks, we could possibly come up with the parameters for an RFQ.
Yep.
At that, which point, we're going to take at least a few weeks to find the best candidate. That, at which point, it's going to take at least a few weeks for them to come up. Now we're two months away, right? So we're two months more experience of working with Dr. Kuchenberger before any sort of forum or poll goes out. So I actually, I, I think that we're, we'll hit that sort of January timeline that you're thinking of, but just in a, we'll be ahead of it, instead of it sort of, sort of trying to rush in front of it, if that makes any sense, you know, like.
There's also the factor that, you know, if we hire a search firm, we are in control of the client, of, of, we are the client. We can tell them, we want you to start this in January. We can tell them what the timeframe is of when we want to start. I mean, the question is, do we have a pool of one, or a pool of many, right? And then we give, you know, Dr. Kuchenberger the opportunity, if she, you know, depending on what the thing is, if she wants to
She could be sick of us by January.
Continue to pursue a permanent superintendency, yeah, she may say, you know what? I kind of want to stay in New Hampshire, closer to my family, or whatever, I don't know. And that's her option, or, so, you know, she has agency too, and she has a decision point that she needs to make as well. But I think that, I think that it's worth going through the sort of committee input to see whether or not, you know, the interests, to know, one, I think it's going to help inform this committee and also the district generally, where do, where does the community really want to go with our educational values, our mission, and that? And present that as, the superintendents need to be able to demonstrate a skillset, or a background, or a whatever that helps meet this particular vision, right? That has to match. It's not going to be a decision made of, made by, I, I don't think any one of us, like, you know, going out on a limb, but I don't think any one of us would feel comfortable just making the decision for the community in that way, right? So I think, so I think we can accomplish both things, which is to, you know, start the process of selecting a thing, selecting a firm, and aligning the timeframe with, you know, an assessment of Dr. Kuchenberger through that separate, independent process. I think we can accomplish both of those things.
I think though, to put out the RFQ, we have to have that timeframe decided, because you have to let the firm know when you're expecting them to do the work. And I don't think it's reasonable to expect that we can have community forums between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, you know, and we're not going to get the firm selected in the next month or so, so I think that's fine, but I think we need to have a timeline to put in the RFQ, so that they know what they're bidding on. Do you know what I'm, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, I think you can refine that in a contract too. I mean, you can give them a generalized timeframe of when we want to do this. Or you can just sort of say, the other option too, is sort of say, this is what we want done. You come back and tell us, in order to meet a, in order to have a contract with a superintendent by whatever date we, we pick, tell us what your work plan is, and evaluate that, right? Based on their, their resources, I mean, there's multiple ways of doing this. I mean, you can sort of outline the, the timeframe, right? I don't know what it is, calendaring is not really one of my great strong suits, I don't know when the timeframe really is. Or we can sort of just say, you know, you tell us, and then, or work it through the contract details. And I'm suggesting one's better than the other, and I think sometimes if you wait till the contract, it may make people a little more nervous. But, you know, ultimately, these firms will be able, I would assume that these firms should be able to sort of resource the work, right? I do agree that we need to give them a timeframe, a generalized timeframe. But I don't think we, I don't think we necessarily need to decide that upfront, right? It can't be ambiguous, it can't be vague, so.
Yeah, because the other thing too is, they could say, well, this is feasible and this isn't feasible.
Yeah.
You know, and, and.
And they can advise us, like, you know, in order to actually get this done, we should do this, blah, 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 right? That's my thought.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, they're the experts. We're, we're telling them what we want, and they're telling us what they can do.
You know, and obviously, I'm not an expert in purchasing, I've had some very interesting experiences with that. But, I think the good news with this one is, is it doesn't have to go to lowest bidder, we can pick on whom best meets our needs. But they need something to respond to, so we have to provide them with enough information to respond, and, you know.
Yep, I agree.
So if we're wanting them to do a community forum, and then we're going to want them to do this survey, that's a little more than just sending out, sending, posting it, collecting the resumes, you know, kind of the stuff that we did before.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
And plus, at this.
RFQ would, would, you know, tell us your experience in doing this process, you know? If this is what we want, you know, that's our expectation, that we have community feedback as part of our process, then they need to be able to respond to that. What have you done, what's your experience? You know, when we interview the, we, we bring all the, you know, we bring a, let's say five, we issue the RFP, five respondents, you pick three, pick two, bring them back in, we interview them, you know, we can ask them.
So you actually just said something by mistake, that's actually an interesting point. But if we did an RFP instead of an RFQ, help them bring to us what they can offer.
Well, that's the RFQ, and RFQ was.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, RFQ, RFP, I mean, I know that, I understand there's a distinction, but, you know, ultimately, we, we can decide what we want people to respond, what a firm to respond.
I think we're making this process really complicated, and, and we're talking around and around, and we need to, I mean, we've got things we need to decide, you know, you know, are we going to have a lead? Are we going to have a group for this? We, do we want to go, we're going to have, you talked about.
When are we going to start?
When are we going to start? And then we're also going to be evaluating Julie as well, as, plus having some forums, so, with questions. And at the same time, remember everybody, and I know this is part of our job, but we're going into budget season too.
Right, which is why I think we're better off starting sooner rather than later. Because if we wait until that January date, we're in the middle of budget season. Right now, we can actually get ahead of it while we still have a month or two.
The point of identifying a lead and/or a search committee would be that they would work on this and bring it back to you.
Right.
So you're not going to actually decide that tonight, right? And so I think to Stacy's point, the question is, is this just Michelle on her own? Or are there other folks who are going to join her in this work to bring it back to you, so then you can make decisions?
So, and that leads back to sort of my first question, is where your comfort level is in, you know, and then where our comfort level is as a committee?
I guess there has to be someone else, because I'm comfortable with what I brought the last time. And I don't, so the only thing that I'm hearing from the committee that they want changed is the release date of the RFQ.
So, but I mean, that, that's what you brought something to the table, and the committee said that they felt like it was too far in advance. So yeah, I mean, I think that moving the timeline up is, was the consensus.
Okay, so by what date did you want to start?
Well, like I, personally, the sooner the better.
So we want to be interviewing firms in December.
I actually feel, I feel like we're already behind where we should be.
So we want to be interviewing firms in December, we want to be interviewing firms in November, that's like what we, the, you know what I mean? I mean, I.
Is, is November unrealistic?
Probably.
So how about the most realistic?
I mean, if we don't, if we don't approve this until the next meeting, I mean, maybe you could put it out and get responses, but you're not going to get the people in here by November.
Yeah, it's already going, by our next meeting, we're in October right now.
And this is what they do.
Yep.
We're in October, our next meeting, if we were to approve it, is our last meeting in October, so it wouldn't happen till November. We can't push it up any farther, we're already in October, and the next meeting's in two weeks. And that's our last meeting of October, so it would be pushed out to November, by the time we approve.
And you did the interviews in December.
Peter, it seems like we're, are we locked into a year, or could we just do a two-year interim? We could always extend, that was one thing that Glenn had said. But again, if we don't do our best work in trying to get this, right? One, we're at Dr. Kuchenberger's sort of precarious position.
When?
Yeah, you know, and because during the process, I would imagine she's going through the process herself on her own. But at the same time, if we're not sort of making a valiant effort in trying to find that long-term solution, then we're not doing our job and doing what we had promised the community would do in the spring.
There's also an option too, of, you know, if her evaluation, based on feedback from other people and our evaluation, and that she's a viable candidate, that we could offer her a three-year contract with one-year contingency that we can change her mind.
So we could do all of this, right? And that's fine, but at the same time, I'm not doing anything without feedback from the community.
You can still do that.
So, exactly. That's why I wanna get the feedback done sooner rather than later.
Okay, so if we put out an RFQ, when do you want people to respond by?
November.
November what?
So as soon as we can. It's two weeks, I think, of, of enough of a timeline. Like, there, there's a handful of firms that do this.
I mean, how long does it take to get accomplished?
Yeah, you know what I mean? There's a handful of companies that do this.
It's probably gonna be over ten, 'cause of the number of meetings and the, what, what we're asking them to do is more, probably gonna be more than ten. Fifteen, it'd be what I would think, yeah.
Yeah.
You think fifteen would respond? You think there's, is there fifteen?
No, 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 fifteen thousand.
The cost, it's fifteen thousand, and there's one.
No, there won't be more than five that respond, 'cause there's only five companies that really do this in Massachusetts.
Oh, that, that's why I might, in, in.
There's one who, right now.
I'm sure there's an RFQ that exactly fits, that's already living out there, that's how it is done, you know, like.
I made it, it's right here.
Michelle's done it, right there.
I did it. I went to the, I went to an RFQ, I got one from Mars, I got one from the M A C, I adopted it for us, and that is what I presented.
Right.
The question was the timeline, so we're still, like, I presented a timeline, the committee didn't like the timeline, but there was no feedback as to what we should do next. So we need to decide what the timeline is before we can go forward. So if the timeline is to approve it at the next meeting, then we'll have something at the next meeting to discuss.
Right, that's what I did.
Which the next meeting is, um, October sixteenth, right?
Correct, so I think she has a copy of this.
And, and then approval from there, then it would take, you know, however long it takes it, once we approve it from there, that's going into November, and.
So the interviews would be sometime in December.
So it's one month sooner.
We can give, we can give the candidates four, sorry, Julie, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the other option you have, if your, if your hinging question is, what's the community input? You could employ a third party to do some sort of community survey, separate from the one that I created, and get that feedback, and then use that to make your decision. You don't have, that's not gonna cost you over ten grand, so you wouldn't have to go through the whole procurement process. And that might be a critical next step. You could also ask, you could employ some, a facilitator to facilitate some community forums, if that's partly what you wanna do next, and not be thinking about the whole process soup to nuts, um, as a search can be costly.
And I like, I like that idea to see where we're at, because, I mean, as we all know, our budget is tight. We're, um, and I don't see our costs going down anytime soon. And I think that's something that our school committee should look at and see where we're at, an outside facilitator to help, you know, have some community forums, que, ask the questions, whatnot.
So, yeah, I think there's, there's, there's a lot of value in that, right, so, because we can be sort of working, um, synchronos, syn, uh, forget about it. But just working a few things at the same time, and we're not waiting for that whole process, uh, to get the process, to get that feedback out sooner rather than later. I like the idea of sort of moving to a different, um, survey, just to sort of be able to let you get your hands off of it, um, and, you know, um, for if and when you become a candidate in the full process, I, I think just, it, it, the, you know, it would look better. And not to say that your survey can't go out in another capacity, which I know you already have an idea for.
Well, I've been kind of waiting to see what the timeline was and what the messaging was, but I, I'd actually prefer your idea.
Yeah, so.
So in the interest of time, do, um, do we wanna make a recommendation to move forward, or direct Michelle of how our school committee wants to go, because I have to say it's ten oh seven. I have to be up for a plane early.
I definitely think that we want to, um, move this along. I, the, one, I, I, all right, here's what I think we need to do. I think we need to actually, um, move, probably to give Michelle the permission to do this, and actually move it up to, and, to have for next meeting. Um, and I think that if she feels she needs help with the process, create a subcommittee right now, and then probably makes most sense to add a, um, agenda item on the next agenda about creating, looking for that survey.
So do we want Michelle to move?
So why would you have it be a third party? If you're gonna move the search process forward, why wouldn't you just have that group do that?
Because we could, in the process of doing one thing, searching that fir, for that firm, we could pay, have another firm actually doing the survey sooner, so then that information is available to the search firm once we choose them.
They're gonna be the same people.
So.
The people who are gonna do those surveys are the same people who are gonna do the search.
Yeah, but there's, one's a much smaller job than the other.
So what are we, so what we're saying is that we are ta, telling Michelle to put out a proposal for facilitating, uh, surveys. Is that what you're saying, as part of the process?
So it's, uh, Michelle would be putting out an RFQ, looking for a search firm for the new superintendent search.
She has one.
So with the dates moved up to be voted on for next meeting? If it's a matter of just going in and changing the dates, that's fine, but we could put it on the next agenda.
So you're adamant about having this to be, no, about this being a, a search committee for a superintendent, as opposed to doing the third party, to facilitate?
It's a third-party search firm.
I think you're talking about two separate things.
Yeah, I do, too.
So there's the RFP that's gonna go out for a full search, and what I hear you saying, David, is that you want to make a motion to give Michelle the authority to move forward with updating that, to, to the adjusted timeline.
Yep.
Then separately, it's who's going to reach out to a third-party per, vendor to find out about the cost and the process for doing a separate community survey.
So.
Is it a community survey, or is it a community forums?
Personally, I think we'd bit, better, deeper responses from a survey than a forum.
I don't necessarily agree with that, because, you know.
You might, but I don't know.
You could do both, it fits with your goals.
Fifty, fifty. Yeah.
I mean, it's really the goal that you're working on, David.
Right.
Where both of those could be key action items.
But, I mean, I think the survey would help facilitate a better forum.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I, I was just that we just want, we need, well, this is the way I would look at it, which is not necessarily, like, the best, but I'm just thinking about it right now, which is that, um, what we really want is community feedback. The method of actually getting that feedback, I don't know, right, 'cause there's issues of timing, there's this issue of the skillset of the, of whoever we hire, whatever it might be. So it could be a forum, it could be door-to-door, it could be a Google ser, I don't know what it is, right? But we say that, generally, what we're looking for is community feedback of some sort, around the issues of where does this actually go in the future? What, you know, what characteristics you want in a new superintendent, what characteristics you want in a new leadership for the, whatever it is, right? That's what we really want. I think, I think we should just, and I would think we just should just embed it in the same RFP for the survey, for the search firm. That's what I was.
I'm not, I'm not against that.
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't know about the timing of it, but I think, like, you know, next week, or, sorry, next meeting, Michelle comes back with her final draft of the thing, we look it o, or, you know, we look it over, know the comments, know the edits, we finalize it, we issue it, give, give responses to three weeks, four weeks, whatever it is, done. I don't know.
Did we have a motion, or did we not have a motion?
No.
So we had a debate without a motion?
I moved that Ham, uh, that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, uh, move that Michelle Bailey will work on an, are we calling it RFQ or RFP?
Proposal?
RFP to, um, proposal for a search firm with revised dates. For the process.
So just the discussion here would be, no, we didn't have a discussion without a motion, because we're actually trying to figure out what the motion was gonna be.
Oh, okay.
So, all those in favor? That's, you know. All right, superintendent's report.
So just wanted to give you guys a couple, or share a couple of shout-outs with you. We have several staff members who have received recognition in a variety of ways, and if you're following us on Twitter at H W underscore schools, um, you would have seen posts about this, but I wanted to just publicly congratulate Anne Page. Um, she works in the social studies department at our high school. A little fun fact about Anne Page, she's probably one of the few educators who can say she taught both kindergarten and seniors, um, in her career, and she recently was one of a hundred and fourteen teachers selected for, um, a National History Day Scholarship for a program titled Legacies of World War One. The program is a partnership between the U S World War Centennial Commission, National History Day, Glider Learman Institute of American History, and the National World War One Museum and Memorial. And, um, we're so proud of Anne, and know that she's going to engage in webinars and discussions throughout the year, and bring this back to our colleagues. But I think what this community could be even more proud of, um, not just Anne's selection, but the way her colleagues all chose to congratulate her. I was fortunate enough to be, like, tagged on an email chain, and it was just really great to see everybody, um, you know, giving her accolades and being proud of her. So, congratulations to Anne.
She was also a great mentor to me when I was teaching at the high school. She's fantastic. So I have, no surprise, and congratulations, Anne.
Yeah, congratulations to Anne. Um, she also does our new staff orientation Town of Hamilton Wenham School Bus Tour, where she gives all kinds of fun facts and history, which was a really fun activity to participate in.
It's like Miss Spurzel on the bus tour.
It is like Magic School Bus. Um, also Deb Clapp, another teacher at the high school, was recently quoted in an article, and you can also find this on our Twitter feed, or, um, on her Twitter feed, and, uh, it's a pathology artic, uh, publication, and, um, it's called Educating Beyond Borders. And she was really talking about the way that she uses social media in her everyday teaching, and if you follow Deb Clapp on Twitter, you will notice that she is a prolific tweeter, um, in a positive way, and is always sharing all kinds of ideas and resources. And I know she uses, um, not only social media, but like YouTube and things like that in her classroom, so.
Be super scared and freaked out by the information she has about death.
Yeah, she teaches forensics. So congratulations to Deb. We're super proud of her. Um, also, our middle school nurse, uh, Mary Tang Bowles, passed her national certification for school nurses exam. So just all of these examples of our teachers who are truly lifelong learners, so it's really walking the talk, not only thinking about how do we ensure that each one of our students are lifelong learners, but being those role models. And my last shout-out would be, um, for the Wellness Fair that's coming up on Saturday. It's going to be from ten to one. I plan to be there, um, with my family. It'll be at the Miles River Middle School. There's lots of vendors, and the wellness team, um, has really put a lot of time and energy into planning this event, um, and hopes to make it an annual event. So we're looking for a big turnout. Tell your friends. You can stop by for a little while or a long while. It's gonna be a great event. And then the last thing I just wanna make the school committee aware of, and the community, is that, um, as we had anticipated, we're at the point where we do need to add another preschool classroom. It will be at the Winthrop School. Um, this is, um, something that is unbudgeted, um, but that we absolutely need to add. We know of three, um, students who are turning three, who require early intervention supports, and our other two preschool classrooms are at max capacity. So, um, our intent is to, um, make some staff shifts at the Winthrop School, which will not be popular, and we will be very gracious and appreciative to the teachers who are asked to move, so we can open a full-size classroom. This will, um, make space for one classroom teacher, one teacher's assistant, all of the furniture, and, you know, practical life materials and things that, uh, make a preschool learning experience robust. And it'll also open up, our goal right now is to bring on, um, eight peers. So these would be typically developing peers that would, um, be a part of the classroom, and that, that's the integrated approach. You're always trying to have, like, a fifty-one to forty-nine ratio of students needing early intervention, and students who are typically developing. So if anyone's looking for five days of preschool, um, at Winthrop School, they should reach out to our Student Services Department. We do have a waitlist, so we're working through that first, to see how many folks are still in need, um, of a preschool experience for their young learners. And as we know, early intervention is the best investment that we can make. You know, if I could really have it my way, we would get babies at birth, um, during that most rapid time of development, um, but three is a good start. And so, um, we believe deeply that as many students as we can service at that early young age, um, the better investment we're making, not only in their future, but for our, our communities. So I think the return on investment, and I should probably update this for FY twenty dollars, but it's some, somewhere like, for every dollar you spend on early intervention, the return on investment is like eight dollars and sixty-eight cents, or something like that. Don't quote me on the exact.
So, um, do peers have to be three, or can they be the two-nine?
Um, I am not a hundred percent sure on the specifics of, like, what the cutoff would be. There is a screening process for peers as well.
Is there gonna be a day that they do that, like they do in the spring, or?
So right now, um, there, there will be scheduled appointments for that. They're working through, um, the waitlist, and then some of our other, um, peers who maybe have two days but wanted fives, checking back and seeing if they still, if they would like to make an adjustment, um, but.
Those people do not have to live in town, correct?
The.
Peers.
Peers? I'm not sure about that. I don't think they do, 'cause they pay tuition.
Yeah, so it could be, you know, if you have a friend that's in another town, let them know, yep.
And so a full year, um, for fo, five days, full pre-K is six thousand dollars for tuition, which is a fraction of what I paid for my daughter to go to preschool, so I'm guessing that would be true in this area as well. But then, of course, it would be prorated, 'cause we're not, 'cause we're starting later.
A whole year, yeah.
Yep. And so we're in the process, we posted the position, um, and the T A, we posted them as anticipated. Uh, we're adjusting that posting to see if it can attract some more applicants to, now that we know we absolutely need it, um, and hoping to bring that on as soon as, um, the week of October twenty-first. So our facilities department will be working with our staff. Our staff, like I said, those who have to move, will be doing so, um, based on the fact that we know this is what's best and right for our children, um, and we will be very gracious for their flexibility.
And were you able to confirm with Stacy the time for the parents' rights? 'Cause I think that's gonna be before our next meeting.
The time for the parents' rights, um.
Workshop. I think it's gonna be ten fifteen, but I don't know the time.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
I'll follow up on that, though.
Yeah, 'cause hopefully she will have a communication about that.
Mm-hmm. Yes. That's all I have.
Uh, I've got nothing for the chair reports, so we'll move right over to capital finance, planning, um, the elementary school site visits for October eighth from four to seven.
But that's only for us, not the community. Yes.
Yes. So I, I responded, uh, no, and I spoke to Dr. Kukunberger already. I've actually gone through Cutler already, and I've been in this building for most of my life at this point. Um, I will stop by Winthrop, though. I'll be right at football practice across, so I'll go over for that Winthrop visit, 'cause I haven't been through Winthrop yet, so that's what my no, if anyone saw that I voted, or said I wasn't gonna attend. But I will attend, uh, the Winthrop portion.
I'll just be a few minutes late. I teach CCD, so it runs till four. And I, the first school we're going to go to is Cutler or Winthrop?
First one is Cutler.
Yep, it's, um, page five in your packet.
Oh, we can see the ramp.
I can meet you there.
The goal is for the principals to, um, facilitate the tour of their building, so they can speak specifically to educational programming challenges, or, um, you know, benefits. So it's a chance for you to build a relationship with the principal, too, and connect. And then our director of facilities, Tom Gary, will be there to talk about some of the infrastructure and things, so be assured. Tour.
Anything else? Oh, all right. Move on to the consent agenda.
I wanna pull August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes.
Sorry. Anything else?
I moved that the Ham- uh, I-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I moved that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the agenda as, um, as stated, pulling out August twenty-eighth.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, um, point out that in the August twenty-eighth, um, minutes, um, when reviewing, um, that we did not vote, no, do an actual vote on Long Meadow, so, and, um, the capital group did not, um, vote it either, so that's something that we might wanna look at if we wanna make a final thing. And then also, just to let you all know that I just don't have the time to review the minutes, so everybody's gonna have to go through minutes for changes. So other than that, I'm fine with it, it's just was more of a point out information.
So, when, uh, do you, on the August twenty-eighth, um,
It, it was just discussion, we never made a formal vote, so I'm just pointing that out. So it's something that, you know, if we want to close it with a formal vote, yes, but my suggestion is we, um, we can, I mean, capital plan needs to kind of do a formal vote and decide what they wanna do, because there's a lot going on.
So.
What?
Do you go into the video action, right?
For what?
So you're looking on page thirteen, section eight, correct? So, yeah, I, where, I, I don't understand where it says that it was voted.
That's what she's saying, there is nothing there that says there was a vote.
There was no vote.
But that's what I'm saying, there's no vote, and there's nothing in here that says there was a vote.
Right, that's what she's saying. There's been no vote to decide what to do about Long Meadow.
Where does it say otherwise here? It, it says, "The discussion regarding the challenges faced, review the history of Long Meadow." Excuse me, and then the next one, "The school committee ultimately agrees that Long Meadow purchase is not in the best interest of the schools at this point. School committee will not pursue the purchase of Long Meadow land at this time."
Can I inter- I think, I think the minutes themselves are fine, you did accurately request what happened, but you're bringing up the issue that should this school committee want to close?
E- exactly, thank you, I said the minutes are correct, but should we want to officially close it? I mean, because there has been communication out saying that we have closed it, but we haven't officially closed that with a vote, we can't do that right now. I'm just saying, the capital plan needs to come up with a consensus on that, and then bring it forward to the committee, and then if we want to close it and vote it. I'm just saying, that's for future, I'm just pointing that out. The minutes are correct.
All right.
Yeah, we'll take it up.
So why are we pulling the minutes then?
I was pointing it out to clarify that information, that's why.
So do you want to change?
No, they're all set.
All right, so we're gonna vote on everything else, and then we're gonna do, then we're gonna vote on the August twenty-eighth minutes, correct? Okay, so all those in favor?
Of the consent agenda.
Of the consent agenda, that's unanimous, and now can we make another motion for August twenty-
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept the minutes for August twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, with no changes.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, topics for next meeting? I know we've now, uh, moved a couple things on earlier, um.
I'd like to see, uh, we had an email sometime between the last time I checked my email and the time I checked my email before this meeting. There was a email from Craig saying they were gonna go out and look at the field, so I'd like a follow-up on the football thing.
Also add the, um, like to vote on, um, bring the MASC resolutions forward, because we're gonna need that for the November, um, for MASC in November.
I'm moving the RFP.
So I have that you're going to review and vote on, for approval, the RFP that Michelle's updating, that you're going to finalize your goals, that, um, you'll vote on the MASC resolutions, that you will make a decision regarding Long Meadow, and officially vote one way or the other, pending a recommendation from the Capital Financial Subcommittee that meets on the fifteenth, and then an update on the condition of the fields.
Or just the decision around football, if that's the case. And, um, what's the story with, um, Brad and Bruce? Did they come back with a date, or do we need to circle back, or is that something you're doing, is that something you want someone else to do?
So I saw Senator Tar on Saturday at the Public Safety Day, and we talked about trying to find, um, another date that might work. And so I was working with someone from Representative Hill's office to coordinate that.
Right. But we don't think it's gonna be the next meeting?
I think Wednesdays are tricky in general, because they're in session, um, but I will get some dates that might work and share them out with all of you.
Yeah, because the bill's gonna be voted by the time we have any information on it. Like, can they send us something?
So I know that there was a special meeting with superintendents, um, where, um, various representatives from the communities were there, and they were very receptive to feedback from superintendents regarding the Opportunity Act. Um, in terms of the, the impact that it'll have for Hamilton Wyndham, it's going to be minimal. I mean, it's really, if you read the bill, it's really geared towards the gateway cities, and, you know, so long as the state focuses on equity, this is gonna be the story for, for Hamilton Wyndham, and I, I think that that's probably fair in the big picture of things.
But in the little picture of things, which is what I have to be concerned about, it's not what I want my legislator doing, so that's why I would like for us to be able to talk to them.
I'm honestly, honestly, I'm curious if we're gonna lose money on the deal.
So that we can- Uh, so that we can possibly advocate on behalf of our district, so that's my issue.
Yeah, so I can, you know, try to continue to coordinate the face-to-face, but in the interim, you can share concerns directly with them too, um.
But I just don't have enough information to do that, that's my issue, so, and I think it helps them if other public officials speak, and to speak, I can't speak for this group, but if this group speaks, I think we have more voice than the individuals alone, so. And, and I know, uh, this is not your fault, I'm not saying it's your fault, I'm just saying that, could they just, I don't know, send us a letter? Could they do anything? Because I've heard that they're concerned and they need people to advocate, but they're not giving us the tools to do it.
Okay.
They're not even reaching out to say that they're concerned.
They're not, you know, I saw them at an event, that's how I know, it's not because they're reaching out, so, okay.
Right, we have, anything else for future meeting?
Maybe I'll just call Brad.
All right, then at this point, we're gonna adjourn to executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Hamilton Wyndham Educational Association, not to return to public session. Uh, do you roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
So Michelle?
No.
So Stacy?
No.
David, yes? Michelle?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Uh, and what time do we got, nine thirty-seven?
How about ten thirty-two?
What, it's ten thirty-two?
Ten thirty-two, that's what I said.